We have a review of work session discussion meeting minutes.
I didn't have any additions or changes.
All right. Then we'll move to department head report if we could, uh, I'm gonna let Corey Troutman from Susquehanna go first if that's okay.
Just wanna share a little bit of good news, um, through February, uh, collections have been up, um, we're ahead of schedule in revenues. We actually have collected about twenty-six million dollars through this point, um, expenditures year to date are about nine point five million dollars, so, um, collections at this time last year were much lower, um, so we have experienced a lot of people coming in and paying taxes early. So, positive note, we do have, from a cash standpoint, um, we have a significant cash balance as a result, um, we do have debt payment, debt service payments coming up in the near term here, so I'm gonna be running some analysis just to make sure, but it looks like we'll probably be able to pay off our line of credit earlier this year, which should result in some savings, um, on the interest expense side. The only other piece that I have, and I'll have a full report, as we discussed quarterly, we're gonna do, uh, quarterly reports, budget to actual with a detailed analysis, um, for probably an April meeting for the first three months. That report may not include accrual basis balance sheet because we're still in the process of trying to close down accruals, um, some of which might be impacted by the union negotiations to the extent that there's, you know, retroactive pay in any one of those, so that'll be open until some of those get resolved. The only other item that I had on the list that we do need to address was the, um, the Act thirteen informational session that we had, there was a request from Joe Patrella regarding a twenty thousand dollar donation, uh, just wanna get some guidance from the, from the board as to what, what you guys wanna do with that. I think I circulated some information as far as information, if you want me to go over any of that, I don't know if Joe's here today, but...
Yeah, I think he's...
He's in the back right corner.
Oh!
I think...
Um, but that's something that, time is of the essence, um, if we are gonna go move forward with the donation, uh, an application's gonna have to be filed by the conservancy, um, to potentially have DC and R match funds, so it is something that, if we're going to ultimately fund, we probably need to do it sooner than later, but we'll let that up to discussion.
So, to inform the public, the, the twenty thousand dollars that Joe's requesting is for, to purchase a farm, correct Joe?
Mm-hmm. For the incidental cost of purchasing the farm?
Yes.
The appraisal, the survey and all of that stuff?
So if, and it's not a guarantee that we will receive, not we, as, the farm, we'll receive the farm, correct? If, if we do this twenty thousand dollars, it isn't a guarantee, correct?
This'll get the pro, the process started.
Okay.
Uh, they have to do the appraisal, once the appraisal's done, the, uh, property owner can accept or reject the offer. He has an option to get his own appraisal if he thinks it's better than that. Which, right now, just from experience, uh, the size of his farm is fifty acres and we've been doing fairly well on the appraisals on smaller farms, so I would assume that he's gonna accept the offer, wha- whatever it would come out to be, that'd be my guess. Uh, if we don't go any further, then whatever monies are left over would come back into the fund.
That was my next question, is, is there any way to retain the money if we all acquire the farm?
The only money we would be using up would, would be the appraisal to start with.
Okay.
That's roughly about twenty-five, twenty-seven hundred dollars. And then, if the, uh, property owner rejects that, then the balance of the money would come back.
So initially, it's just, even though it would be a twenty thousand dollar contribution, it would more or less be like a two thousand or three thousand dollars just for the...
I think, yeah, based on what Joe and I have discussed, it, it would be spent, and if the process doesn't move forward, the balance would not be spent, but ultimately, I think, if the process does move forward, they'd be looking for additional from the, the full twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
Right. And then potentially, I mean, that then assumes that the conservancy is gonna be able to raise the other half of the, of the funds, 'cause there is some potential that we might have to kick in additional money if, if they're not...
Yeah, before we start anything, we'd make sure that, that their funds would be available first, before we even start the appraisal. Be no use to start the appraisal if they're unable to garner up the funds that they need to do. But right now, it's just a request for the commitment to the twenty thousand, if everything else falls in place.
Can you just give a brief overview, uh, you know, we're talking about twenty thousand dollars, on what, why you're trying to acquire the farm and what, what the need is for it?
By our regulations, if, this farm has been on our waiting list for somewhere around sixteen years now. Every year, we get new, new people in and they go ahead of them. But we just found out the latter part of last year that the landowner has a terminal, is terminal cancer. And under our regulations, when we have a situation like that, a farmer that really wants his farm preserved, we could ask the nonprofit to assist us in purchasing the farm for us, and then after it's purchased and everything is signed, sealed and delivered, then they would turn it over to our, our program for a dollar. We would acquire, they would garner up the, it's probably gonna be in the neighborhood of a couple hundred thousand dollars to purchase this farm, the easement on this farm. They would garner up all the monies except the twenty thousand, and then they would sell it to us for a dollar. And we would monitor progress, but whatever. Once a farm is in the program, it's in forever, in perpetuity. So, we would monitor it then from there on.
Joe, um, when we were going through the budget process, we increased your budget fifty thousand to put that towards saving farms. Why can't we use that fifty thousand and, and bump one of those, 'cause there were two farms that you were gonna save, bump one of those farms down till next year and put this one in the, in, in its place?
The fifty thousand that I requested was sent in for state match money, I can't use it for this, this way around. Set up to go the other direction, I can't pull twenty thousand dollars of it out to go to this farm. That money is set up with the state, the state has matched it. That fifty thousand came somewhere in the neighborhood of about fifty-seven thousand dollars on top of the fifty, so... I can't use that money to loan it to them for the purchase of the incidental costs. It's not, it's not, uh, covered by the regulations.
But it's the same program.
It's the same program, but all the monies are set up certain ways.
So that fifty thousand's already accounted for?
Yes.
Tell us, okay.
Yes.
Well, why can't we, like I'm saying, is, this is a circumstance in which you're saying that this person is terminally ill. Is there no exceptions to that for, no?
Once, once it's set up for match money, then it'll have to be used to purchase the easement, not the incidental costs. That's why when I make my, my budget request, I ask for office allocation and easement allocation. 'Cause the easement has to be put in a specific account, and it's matched by the state for purchasing the easement itself, not the incidental costs.
Easements in the budget, uh, I think it was fifty if I'm not mistaken, it was the easement.
Fifty for the Act thirteen under deal.
Yeah. When is the deadline for...
Table the tenth, they have to apply for their, their funds, their matching funds on table the tenth.
Corey, when do you think we're gonna be discussing, I mean, the entire scope of the Act thirteen funds?
Well, I think we have a summary from the informational session, that probably we need to have some kind of discussion on how, how the board wants to prioritize spending of that. But realistically, I would still not recommend spending a lot of that money until we have some clarity on union negotiations, 'cause I don't know how that's gonna impact, you know, what we're gonna have to spend in other areas, um, you know, what's gonna be eligible, et cetera. So, it just depends on, I guess, the status of that. Because right now, that's the biggest thing that's, I mean, that and trying to get, you know, full capital improvement plan is the biggest thing that's stuck, that's in our way of a long-range plan, if you will.
Would we be able to have a public meeting and discuss the Act thirteen altogether and include this in with that before his deadline?
Yeah, I don't see why, no, that's...
I don't think, yeah, I mean, there's, how you're gonna prioritize or what you wanna prioritize could, could scope some of that, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I would feel more comfortable if we kind of looked at the whole picture instead of just pulling pieces of the puzzle out and...
Absolutely, I agree, the only reason this came to the, to the board is because of the timing of it, otherwise we would have...
Understood.
So, so we'll schedule one of our work sessions specifically, not specifically, but we'll have a slot in there for Act thirteen discussion to go over the prioritized list, even though we won't be spending the money, but we'll start assigning what's, what's most, uh, most important, okay?
Is that...
That's...
Okay, what's the two, Joe? Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll definitely have an answer before April tenth, I mean, hopefully prior to that, it looks like we have one, three Wednesdays prior to, uh, April tenth, which is a Wednesday, so... Anything else? Any other department head report? Anybody that wouldn't like to go before the sheriff?
No, I don't either, I'm just here for my kid.
Okay, Dan, go ahead. Yeah.
First off, I wanna introduce, uh, Mr. Scott Patton, he is a senior at Central Valley High School, and he is, uh, job shadowing me today, so he's gonna make sure the county's getting, uh, their money's worth. Keep an eye on me, so, I wanna introduce Scott to everyone.
Gotta have proof he did it.
Just a quick update on the, um, the lift station situation with the pumps there, the pumps have been pulled, they have been, uh, sent to, um, the factory representative who has taken them apart. We got word that, um, the pumps didn't necessarily fail on the, they didn't fail on their own. There is a very, as we all know, the building's forty-plus years old, and there's a very, very old float system. It looks like something that, uh, Sir Isaac Newton may have put together. It's on, it's on a belt, and the floats come off and they're gonna get, and that's what causes those pumps to turn off and on. There's, the belt is damaged, and, um, we're thinking that it caused the belt to jump and then the, the pumps kicked on, they never shut up. So they, they wrecked, they, they basically burned them. So, um, there's something, once I, I've been in contact with a vendor that, uh, does this kind of stuff, as soon as I get pricing to replace this float system, I will share that, of course, with you and Corey. Unfortunately, this whole situation is, seems to be snowballing, um, but, once again, it's, um, it's over forty years old. Nothing lasts forever, and unfortunately, it's under our watch. So as soon as I can get some more information, get some more numbers and stuff like that, I will present to all of you and Corey.
Well, these are the two pumps, right? And are you saying that there's a potential that this is going to cost more than you originally projected?
Always can.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know what, I, yeah, I don't know what yet.
Okay.
You know, but, um, this is something, okay, that, we really don't have a choice.
No, we don't.
Because, you know, we're gonna spend money to rebuild these pumps, have them repaired, and if this float system is still no good, it could happen again. So we have to remedy the cause. As soon as I get numbers, I'll shoot it out.
Well, what were your numbers originally, what were you thinking ballpark, just ballpark?
Ballpark for the pumps were ballpark nine thousand.
Each or together?
For the, for the, for, for the entire project.
Okay.
But that, you know, that's, that's what we're, that's, that's what the estimate was, um, the amount of this float system, um, and I'm sure that that's, um, not gonna guarantee it, but I don't think it's something that we'll be able to do in-house. It's, you know, something that we're really not, uh, experienced with.
Garrett, did we include Dan on the invitation list to the March twenty-second meeting with Constellation Energy?
I did four.
Okay, I wasn't sure, I didn't have a seat.
And we also went one, two, maybe conference call Corey, if he is available, March twenty-second, ten AM.
Yeah, I did four. I know that was last week, that was discussed, and we scheduled a meeting for, uh, March twenty-second, Friday, for informational meeting with Constellation Energy. Any other department head report? Sheriff?
So I'm here to talk about, um, came up last week at the, um, work session, a lot of Roethlisberger grant that we got for a canine program. And, uh, we were awarded that, I guess, a few weeks ago, we got some notice that we were gonna get that grant. We're using that as an opportunity to, um, add a second canine, um, to the sheriff's office. That second canine, um, originally, when I took office, the sheriff's office had three canines, and as a result of some, um, questions about the agreement with the county as it owned the dogs, and how the dog, uh, how the dogs were being managed by the county, I, um, we removed those dogs from service. Since that time, I've had discussions with the legal department, um, in regards to bringing them under a lease agreement. So I've checked around, I've checked around the, uh, around the state, there are other municipalities that do this, and the legal department drew up a lease agreement, uh, with, uh, one of my deputies who owns a dog. And so, instead of spending about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars for a canine, we'll be able to lease a canine for one dollar, uh, from that, from that deputy. And then, uh, at the time that that, uh, that dog is no longer in service, that, that canine will return to the owner, under those circumstances. I don't know, I think you guys may have a copy of the, uh, contract, if you don't, I have some with me.
We have a resolution against the lease agreement.
That's right, oh, so you do have the agreement?
Yeah.
Yes, why, ask for it.
So, uh, again, the purpose of this is to enhance our, our deputy's safety while they're out there serving warrants, while they're out there serving PFA's, seizing guns, um, interacting with the community, keeps them safer, keeps the community safer. Do you have any questions about anything?
So what type, what type of canine is this, would it be classified as a bomb dog, I know there's different types of canines?
This, this dog is cross-trained. It's cross-trained as a patrol dog, which means it, it can enhance officer's safety, and it's also a drug canine.
What entails parole? Patrol, I'm sorry, what, what does that mean?
Basically, just to be, be with my deputy, and again, to enhance officer's safety. It's a, um, just like a use of force option. Typically, when that canine is with my officers, the potential, the potential for, um, somebody who has a warrant for them, somebody who was serving a PFA on, again, somebody who receives and weapons off of, um, the potential for them to give our deputies a hard time is reduced. And, um, again, that enhances officer's safety, it enhances public safety.
Uh, from my understanding, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know how exactly how your office runs, but you have a, you have a warrant team?
I did.
Of three officers?
Four.
Four? Who's the fourth? I have Joe O'Shea, Tom Shane, and Anthony Muselli.
That'd be Aaron Obrizovich.
Okay.
That'd be Aaron Obrizovich.
And you're, the dog is, the handler of the dog is Jim Brown?
The, the one we're bringing on, that's correct. Very experienced handler.
So, if Jim Brown is not part of the warrant team, and you're gonna use the dog to make those deputies safer when they're posting warrants, and he's not on the team, that just doesn't make sense to me.
So it's good to hear that you, you acknowledge that you really don't understand how the sheriff's office runs, that's, that's awesome. So we don't just serve warrants Monday through Friday from eight to four, we serve warrants all the time. Anytime my deputies are out there, we serve warrants. So, uh, and we serve PFA's at any time, um, we're required to do that by the courts. There is no timeframe for when that officer's safety needs to be enhanced. Keep in mind too, and I think this is important too, having a second canine available enhances safety here in the courthouse. There's nothing that says we can't bring that dog into the courthouse to, uh, post at the, uh, at the security entrances, to make people aware that this canine is available within the courthouse. That dog can be used to check courtrooms, areas within the courthouse. You know, at this time, where we've got serious drug issue in the county and elsewhere, I think it's important to have this canine available to do those things.
Do you have any, have any questions?
No, I might, I might not for you.
Just some knowledge on, on not just this canine, but all canines. How long does it take for a canine to be trained, I guess, as a puppy, or if we were to pursue getting a new one? And the second question is more or less about the grant. What does the grant entail, say, we could spend the money, obviously, it's a hunting canine program, in short, it could be car, you know, equipping a car, it could be the, the needs that you have listed here, uh, but, you know, from our budget process, we know how much we pay right now for the Region thirteen dog we have, and I don't think it equals fifteen thousand a year, correct?
No, it doesn't, and, and we expect...
So what, is there any guidelines in this grant on how much money, does this fifteen thousand need to be spent all in one year?
No.
Uh, can it be broken up?
So I've, I've brought Sergeant Breedemeyer with me, who, who really works the grants for my office, and is familiar as I am with it, and I think the, the Roethlisberger program is pretty broad in, uh, in their guidelines as far as how this money can be spent, correct?
Yes.
Sergeant Breedemeyer, you wanna, you wanna kinda go over those guidelines a little?
The grant requirements are that I submit a financial report at six months, whether we spend the money or not. If we have not spent the money, uh, completely, then I have to submit another financial report at twelve months. If we need an extension on that, because we have monies left over that we can use the following year, then they'll grant us that.
I'm, I'm hoping that this money lasts us for a couple of years, we've still got a little bit of money left over from the prior grant, we keep separate ledgers on, on that. And this money comes, I wanna make this clear, this money comes into the county through legal means. The, the law department is familiar with this, we recently got a, got a grant to enhance our, or take a jumpstart, our, um, Taser program. I mean, this is, this is perfectly legal, and frankly, all the other, I would say virtually all the other sheriff's offices in the state that have canines bring money into the county, um, through other means to enhance their programs, this is just one way of doing it.
So, which leads me to my next question, you know, as a county, we wanna make sure we take advantage of all the grant money we can get. So, I guess, you know, it, it is an election year. If, uh, a new sheriff were to come on board and decide they don't want the canine program, the money would just go back to the Roethlisberger Foundation is what we're saying.
I'd have to report that, and it must go back.
Okay. It, which leads me, I guess, and it's just a, a snowball of questions, is would it be more beneficial to the county to purchase a new dog so that this isn't a lease agreement, so then that, you know, we have this dog as a county asset?
I, I don't see any financial advantage to that whatsoever. Um, I think the fact that we're, we're in the same place spending one dog as a spoke, as a, opposed to, um, potentially exhausting all of this money just for the purchase of a dog, and therefore not, you know, the maintenance of the dog going forward then would be, be spent with county money. I think this is the way to get the best bang for the buck, is to go through the lease here.
Tony, it's, uh, as much as you said that, um, you're happy that I'm trying to learn a little bit more about the sheriff's office.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to give you a little lesson about how our department runs. And before you apply for any grant, usually, the elected official comes to us to see if that is something that the county would like to pursue.
Can you tell me where that's written down?
Where it's written down, where's it written down in the county code that you need a canine?
It's not.
What I'm saying is, every time someone, um, applies for a grant, they come forward and we have that discussion. We're now presented with, you've already received the grant, I read about the grant through the Beaver County Times, and no one told me that this was even in a process. So, we're going about this backwards. Um, and I thought we had that discussion when you got the grant for the shields out front, and you went through the grant process that way, and it was explained to you at that time how the grant process works. Why, why did our legal office, um, build the lease or, and not your solicitor? Why wouldn't your solicitor do the lease?
I think my solicitor reviewed the information and worked with that.
Oh.
And my solicitor's fully aware what was going on.
Okay.
He suggested to me that, that we make sure that the county, um, because the commissioners will have to approve this lease through a resolution. I think it was important that the county law department, um, understand what was in the lease and, and do what they're supposed to do in protecting the county, um, under these circumstances, I think that's appropriate.
And... Would you be doing any investigative work with the dog?
What do you mean?
Investigating any crimes with the dog, would you be using that?
To investigate crimes?
Mm-hmm.
I have no intention of investigating any crimes.
Mr. Ken?
I'm gonna kinda go to our district attorney here real quick, sorry Dave, but, uh, would this dog ever join the drug task force with it being a drug dog, or do you guys have no intention of having a canine on the drug task force?
We use canines at times from municipalities that we have used sheriff canines in the past as well.
Okay.
Where we're doing search warrants, and those are cases where we have an act of either a search warrant or arrest warrant for a car or a residence, and if we need the assistance of a canine, uh, we frequently call on, and those are cases where, who would be, why Act one twenty officers and detectives doing an investigation, calling for assistance with the execution of a search warrant? But we do do that.
Yeah, I, I think I can answer, help to answer that question too. If that were to happen, then my deputy, um, would be working at the direction of those police officers who work for Mr. Patton.
Right, we use sheriff deputies to assist us when we are executing some warrants, they have their warrant officer, their, their warrant detail, uh, but they're serving the warrant, not doing the investigation.
And just to be clear on some other things, there, um, through seventeen, and I think it ended in eighteen, there was money that came from the DA's Drug Forfeiture Fund that helped to fund some of the costs of maintaining in the sheriff's office canines, and that, and that was mainly for, um, food and veterinary bills. And I think since we got that Roethlisberger grant, um, that's been stopped, and now that, that Roethlisberger grant has been covering those costs, so...
So are we still using some of the original Roethlisberger grant? We still have some of that money, okay? Any other questions?
Um, no.
I, I'm gonna give, you know, my, obviously, I, you know, would never act as if I know what, you know, the law enforcement does, 'cause I don't work in that department. So I, I guess I saw some more questions on, is this canine going to be on the same timeframe, you know, the, the same working hours as, uh, Mr. O'Shea's canine? Because I, you know, one of the things I do, I try to do, is I gather as much information as I can, I've reached out to many chiefs of police, I just met with one this morning, uh, I, I meet the state police, I meet with, you know, several, the nine-one-one department, and there is, they, they do believe that there could be a need for another dog to assist these municipalities, but it'd be good opposite times of what their dogs work, and their dogs normally work probably seven to three or eight to four. So I, you know, are, how's your schedule?
So my, my...
If we get a new dog, how's the schedule gonna work for, for your office?
My intention is to generally have them working at different, doing different shifts. That makes the availability of that dog for those situations where we are serving a warrant, where we are, um, putting ourselves in a little bit more danger than the average, um, issue that we deal with. That makes us having those, uh, a canine available for any of those times. So my intention is to kinda split those times, I'm not gonna say that I will never have two canines working at the same time, but I'm, I'm intending to avoid that.
I have a lot of questions. If... One handler, for instance, if, if, uh, Mr. O'Shea's been, 'cause we have him, if Mr. O'Shea were to retire or for some reason take employment elsewhere, and Region thirteen dog, that is our dog, that is the county's dog, do dogs normally go with other handlers?
Typically, no, but I, I think I'd... Typically, no, but I, I think I defer to my, uh-
Depends on age.
Okay.
If it's a one, two, three-year-old dog, yeah.
Then they could-
If it's a nine-year-old dog, they're gonna be ready to retire anyway.
Sergeant Younglinski, he runs our, uh, canine program.
How, how old is the, the dog that we're looking to lease? 'Cause this is, this, I'm sorry, poor, thank you. This gets back to my thing, my original question is, you know, if there's ever a change in guard and there are deputies who are handlers for this dog, we're gonna probably, you know, there could be a chance we have to give this grant back, and I wanna make sure the county keeps this grant. So if we were to own this dog, you know, and it, it is a new dog, it could stay here as a county deputy, 'cause they're deputized, as a county deputy, even though, let's just say maybe a handler wouldn't be here or they were to retire at a certain age. I, I just, I mean, this is just a broad question.
Yeah. Um, retire, retiring a dog, uh, retiring a canine, I think, one of two things comes up, the health of the animal. The usefulness of the animal with age, and, and frankly, the, um, the willingness of the deputy or the officer to continue working and not retire. So Jim, uh, you're not planning on retiring anytime in the near future, are you? Uh, again, um, then, uh, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not understanding you. Are you suggesting that we, the county would be better off in, in spending this money on a dog? I think I'm-
That, that's, you know, me personally, I'd rather see the county own a dog than lease it, even though it's financially a, a, a large difference. But I'd rather see us, us own a dog as we do with the region thirteen. Because this is where I ran into a problem three years ago with, with a, an, an agreement, I guess we could call it, even if this will be a lease agreement.
Yeah.
Do, do any of our, uh, you, you could probably speak, I'm sure you did, our municipalities, do they lease dogs? I mean, I know you said several across the state do, but do any more municipalities? Jim?
Everybody's different, but most do it the way we did it before. They raised money and bought the dog, the handler has the dog. I've never seen anyone with a lease agreement before. I don't think it's a bad idea.
Yeah.
But I've never seen it before.
I can, uh, I can also tell you this, this dog has maintained its certification, it's maintained its training. We would be putting ourselves behind the eight, number one, we have to raise the money to get the canine and spend that.
Well, we have the money, correct?
A new, a new dog, a new dog training is gonna be twelve to eighteen thousand.
Yeah, that's the, the dog and the training. So, I, I just, uh, again, th- this money from Roethlisberger is gonna be spread out over a period of time. Um, I think we can, i- if, if we ever lose that canine, um, I think we can appeal to the Roethlisberger Foundation and let them know that we're in the process of obtaining through purchase another dog and, and not lose that money.
Joe, be correct. So the-
And, and again, we, we would still have one other canine, but that money would be used to fund. It, it's for the program itself.
How old is, I'm sorry, I don't know, Mr. O'Shea's dog?
Ringo.
How, how old is Ringo?
I must say about the same age, four.
Okay.
Three.
Yeah, he's relatively young dog also.
Whose dog is this? Whose dog is-
Who owns the dog right now? Deputy Brown.
Okay. You're Deputy Brown?
I am.
Okay. Um, how long have you had the dog?
Since birth.
Um, who trained the dog?
I did.
Um, how how are you qualified to train?
I have my records here, Sergeant Younglinski's, I assisted in training, so I have all the people. We have our records available to you.
Okay, so you're, you're a certified dog trainer?
Correct.
Okay. Has this dog had any other, had any incidents, um, biting of?
No.
No?
Bite who? What? I don't, I don't understand your question. Me?
Well, last dog we had, we had it, uh, down in the sheriff's office, and, and it bit somebody down in the sheriff's office.
That was the dog.
I believe that's the current dog you have now.
It-
It's correct, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, what I'm asking you is, has that, has this dog had any incidents like that?
No.
Okay. And the, so you would, the dog is certified?
Yes.
And you certified him?
No.
Who certified him?
An outside, or, or an organization. American Working Dogs of America. American Working Dog Association, we have people come in, that's not associated with us. I mean, they're in the same organization, but they're not with our department, and they will certify the, and the dog in, as a team. They certify him and the dog for a year.
So, American Working Dog is a-
Association.
Association?
It's a nationally recognized, uh, canine, police canine training association.
Is your company-
It's not our company.
Okay, it's, okay.
It's not, it's, it's just an association. We pay dues, it belongs to this organization.
What's your training company called? Your training organize, you're, you said you're a train-
Association.
No, no.
It's who we use.
The one that you have?
I don't have it in anything. I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay. So, I asked you if you trained the dog.
I did.
You said you did. I said, I asked you, how, how are you a trainer?
I'm a certified trainer.
Okay, so-
Through fifteen years of work, yes.
Okay.
You're, you're asking how, it, that's an association, anybody can train a dog.
Okay.
You could train one and get it certified if, if you could do it.
Okay.
Okay? I've been training dogs for twenty years. Police departments, other police departments, helping them out, assisting. It's just like anything else, you work at it, and as you get older, you hopefully become a little bit better, and you can do certain things.
Okay.
But, uh, as for, for the association, that's a nation, that's a, there's a, there's people all over the world with this association, so.
So you're gonna, you, you train the dogs, but to get them certified, they have to go through the association?
Just like, just like police officer does. They have to do certain things to maintain their certification, but the canine also has to do those things.
And when did it get its certification?
Last May, and it'll be coming up again in May.
Oh, it's a yearly thing?
We do it yearly, yes. We also maintain training records. Every time he trains with a dog, it is on record. So that, it, it has helped out in court a lot of times, um, with me having my records, uh, there to show the, the attorney that we do work. So we, we maintain training logs. It's a, it's an ongoing process.
And, and just to make the board clear, uh, that's all part of the sheriff's office canine program policy. We have an eleven-page policy that addresses, um, how we handle our canine program. That's all part of the training certification, the records, it's all part of that. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Department head report, any other department head reports? Hearing none, solicitors report?
Bring your list of resolutions for tomorrow's voting meeting. I'll highlight a couple. Um, number two deals with the HVAC at the ice arena. This is for basic maintenance on the HVAC. It's just an extension, this is the last extension under that contract, uh, with Reno Brothers. Number three is with, for a lease agreement to utilize the baseball field for the recreational baseball league. Fifteen and sixteen have to deal with a grant with victim witnesses. They, I don't know if you wanna elaborate on that one or not, it's a two-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-dollar grant through the vic- victim witness program up in the courts. Number two-
Can I stop on the fifteen and sixteen?
Sure.
Um, so fifteen, who pays for that?
It, it's, it's, it's a grant that we've received through the state.
Okay. And the sixteen is the permission to apply for the grant?
Sixteen is an application for a different grant, correct? With victim witnesses.
Thank you.
Number twenty is for the lease of a copier at the register of wills office. Twenty-nine is the sales agreement on the old Allen Press property, moving forward with the sale of that. Number thirty-one is the calendar of events for the recreation department. Thirty-two is the lease of the refreshment stand down at the ice arena. This is the last extension for that group to use, to lease the ice arena for, uh, next year. Thirty-five through forty-three are all financial commitments to the libraries throughout the county. Those total approximately a hundred thousand dollars. Forty-five is the lease agreement that we just discussed with the sheriff's department. Forty-seven, forty-eight have to deal with, uh, the emergency food program through the Salvation Army. And then number forty-nine on your list is a temporary construction easement with PennDOT down at the Brady's Run. And he's gonna give you just a little bit of overview of what PennDOT is asking. This is an association with what we reported on last week, that road that is currently one lane. PennDOT's looking for an easement in order to assist with the, the work they're gonna do down there.
PennDOT's looking, I met with a gentleman from PennDOT, um, as you'll recall, due to the, um, presence of endangered bats, we are trying to push this through. Um, uh, a gentleman from PennDOT approached me, they are looking for a, um, right-of-way, uh, this, uh, for the county to sell them a right-of-way interest in this, um, area of land here. This is the, the, the road, anchor counter, it goes up to the ballparks, and this is the one-lane bridge. I'm sorry.
So the ice arena's over here, this is-
Right, I also brought, left me some of these, the, these will help you get your bearings.
So is this on the stream side?
Yes, it is. So we're talking about this area of land. This is like a, a steep grade hill between the creek and the road. Um, and my understanding is they need this right-of-way just in order to maintain this road. As, um, we all know, it continues to, I guess, collapse. And, and then this, this yellow, this small sliver of yellow property, that's just gonna be a temporary construction easement. So they're looking for those, we have reviewed the deeds, um, and the legal documents, uh, for these, and, and approve them as to the form of them. But, uh, but those will be resolutions forty-nine and fifty, I think?
Forty-nine, yeah. And this, just to refresh everyone's memory, PennDOT is saying that in order for them to do the work, they have to cut down some trees, and they have to cut down those trees by the end of the month, or else there's a hiatus until November because of endangered bats that could nest in those trees. So we're looking at if they can't get those key trees cut down in the next couple of weeks, this road will likely remain one lane until at least twenty-twenty.
Where are they gonna store their equipment while they're doing this? Are they gonna be working in this area here, um, that green space?
That's the horse arena, that's where, if this is down where the horse arena is at. Uh, they didn't mention anything about storing any equipment, so-
You would not be approving any?
Yeah, all this, all we're basically saying is that we would allow them to come on this particular property, which you can see here, which is a very small side on the, that'd be the north side of the road. And then this side down here, which basically one side's a cliff, and the other side's a cliff leading into the-
Crater.
Crater. And with the easement, that would just allow them legally to go on that portion of the county's property for the purposes of doing any repair work with the daily.
Okay. Did they say how long this process is going to take to repair this?
They have it, the initial indication, because of our concerns with, uh, spring, with the maple syrup festival and trout season, that initially they were looking at trying to get out there in June in order to do that work. And the only other thing that I will report on is that I will request an executive session to discuss contract negotiation matters.
Any questions for the solicitors?
Uh, I do. For number thirty-one, um, the rec, uh, we're gonna be publishing the calendar for, what is it then?
It's two thousand and nineteen.
Two thousand and nineteen.
Right.
Um, I believe that we have requested before having that proofed by our, our department, your department, somebody else's department, just to have the second set of eyes on it. Number thirty-three is Crown Castle, that is, um, using a tower for putting EMS. Is that the tower that is at the top of Brady's Run? And that will help with the connectivity in Brady's Run?
Yeah, with reception. What, what this is, we've already approved it, this is just an amendment. It just changes the date of whenever it was affected. Initially, it was listed as being effective as June twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, this amends that to be June first, two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. And, and it looks like to me that there's three understandings.
So I guess my, my fundamental question is, uh, does it benefit Beaver County to prevent land from being developed? I guess it's a very fundamental question. I know Butler's brought up a lot in a lot of development meetings I'm in, and how that used to be farmland. Everyone says, oh, it used to be farmland, and now look at it. That's the, like, the phrase I hear over and over. It used to be farmland, now look at it. And, and, and we seem to try to model ourselves or compare ourselves to that as a county often. Does it benefit to take large swaths of farmland to prevent it from ever being developed? Just from an economic impact perspective?
So I, I, I think it probably, we have to look at the broad picture, this is my opinion, look at the broad picture, see where the farm is located, if we ever think that it's really gonna be developed, is there infrastructure out there to be developed? Uh, it's a fine line, because Pennsylvania's number one industry is the farm industry. And that is our number one industry across the state of Pennsylvania. So it's important that we do preserve these farms, because we just had a meeting with the, uh, Farm Bureau last week, I think it was, last Tuesday, and I think, I, I can't, I don't wanna speak out of turn with the numbers, but the number of dairy farmers are down, I think, by seventy-five percent. You know, they're starting to make milk now artificially, they're not even using cows. So it's, you know, I think as a board or, or as an individual, we're gonna have to take a perspective on, and do we wanna preserve our number one industry in Pennsylvania? So I think it's, it's a broad picture, so, you know, i- i- is it good? Yes, it's good because it's our number one industry, but is it bad, 'cause we could be delaying economic development in a certain area? It, it's, it's a tale of two sides.
Joe and I had this conversation at length, because it, it, you weigh economic development and preserving, um, farmland. And how do those two mesh? And so that we're not too heavy on one and get ourselves into a sticky situation?
My understanding, there's a formula that ranks farms that wanna participate. Does that formula take in account potential for economic development? Or is there, does the board have in, input as far as to be able to, um, perhaps say, hey, you might have ranked at the top, but, but we're not sure that's a farm we wanna preserve because of its location? Is that a consideration in the process, or is that more of a?
I think Joe wants to talk to you.
Yeah, great, I'm sorry.
Yeah, first off, the one thing you're gonna need to remember is, this is voluntary. We don't solicit farmers to get into the program, or just because they sign into ag security, we don't force them to go into ag preservation. Both programs are voluntary, they, they wanna be in this. The very first farm we did, the gentleman come to me, we, we were very slow on the first one, 'cause being the first one. The gentleman come to me one day, and he says, when are you gonna get my farm in this program? And I said, well, we're working on it as best we can, we're, we're trying to go as fast as we can. He said, I just found out I have a brain tumor, and I'm not gonna be around much longer. He said, but I put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this place, and I want it preserved. His property was right next to Brunner's landfill. He said, I don't want him coming over here and ruining what I took all my life preserved. He was eighty-one years old. About a month later, he passed away. His wife continued the process, and we put that farm into the program. It ended up that Joe Brunner bought that farm. And he called me to see what he could and couldn't do. And I said, can I ask a question? Why did you, knowing you can't put your garbage dump over there? It's the one less neighbor I gotta argue with, he said neighbor's me. I said, okay. The other answer to your question is the ranking program. There's four sections to the ranking program. Number one is the land evaluation, that's the soils, the class of soils. To give you a thing, I've been doing this for twenty-six years now, my farm doesn't qualify because of my soils. So I can't even put mine in, I can't even donate it, 'cause it doesn't work. The other three sections are developmental potential, farmland potential, and clustering potential. If a farm ranks high on developmental potential, close to water, sewage-
Infrastructure.
The fourth, infrastructure, yes, thank you. He's gonna rank low on farmland and clustering potential, so that's gonna keep his score down. If he ranks high on farmland, then his clustering's probably gonna be also high, and development's gonna be low, because he's out where there is no infrastructure. The soils are always gonna be what they are. That's forty percent of the score. Developmental potential is twenty percent of the score. Farmland potential is thirty, and clustering is ten. That's the way we- Farmland potential is thirty, and clustering is ten. That's the way we have it set up. Other counties set those potentials up the way they want them. Farmer, the land potential and the soils are always the highest. That's what's always ranked the highest, because you're always trying to preserve the best soils so that they're growing the best crops for future generations. So the whole program, like I said, is voluntary. That's what we're building off of all the way around. We're not soliciting people to get into this program. We show them that it's here. I have a display board that I set up at both affairs and at other farm things that we do, and we go from there with it. People come to us, we don't go to them. They call us, we'll tell them what it's about. I have told a couple people in the past, this program may not be for you, because what you, what you have around you and what you're planning to do don't suit. So in twenty-six years, I've turned down three people.
Could you H. Kim not enter the program? If a farm in center township probably wouldn't rank as high as a farm in hook town.
There's no ag security area in center township, so I can't, I've talked to people out there, but because there's no ag security area, nobody will form it. The municipality, somebody in the municipality has to do it themselves. I can't go out there and start an ag security area for them. They have to have the potential to do it.
So just to clarify, part of the scoring process is the ability to get farms that are perhaps adjacent to one another, so you're protecting large swaths of farmland versus sort of spot farming throughout the county?
Right.
Okay.
If you look at my map that I have down in my office, there's probably eighteen, nineteen, maybe twenty farms on the eastern side of the Beaver River and north of, north of the economy. Economy doesn't have an ag security area. Deuce Whitley, Dockerty, North Whitley, Marion and Franklin all do, and most of our business has been up in that corner up there. We have probably, out of the thirty farms, or twenty-nine farms we now have preserved, I think twenty of them are up in that area.
Thank you. A couple of questions with the canine program really quick. Commissioner Igley kept asking about the companies that they're associated with. Now, my understanding, and again, I'm certainly not an expert on this, is a sheriff's deputy, the, the dog is considered a sheriff's deputy. A sheriff's deputy for the county is certified through the state, correct? There's an act, and they have to follow certain training requirements, and they're then certified by the county to be a sheriff's deputy. My understanding is there's no state certification for dogs in Pennsylvania, and instead, those certifications are done through private companies. Is that correct?
Here's the answer to that.
Yes.
Are you asking me?
There is no standard.
There's no standard.
You do it because you ask.
We do. You can have a dog work without any standards. We do it through, it's not a company, it's an organization, association, and that's, and that's something we do to assure that the dog is working properly.
All right, so the American Working Dog Association, as you said, is not a company, but it is affiliated with Bullock's Canine Kennels, correct? Bullock's Canine Kennels?
He's a member.
Both of the, the address for American Working Dog Association goes back to the same address as the corporation for Bullock's Canine Kennels? So they more than just a member? Is he a founding member?
One of them.
Okay. You own the company called Bullock's Canine North, correct? Is that still in operation?
No, I haven't trained it.
Is it, so it's no longer a company?
No.
You're not sure if it's still a company?
I'm, I'm not sure what you're talking about. Do I still own the company?
Bullock's Canine North was registered to you.
Yeah, I, I haven't done business in a couple of years.
But it's still a company?
Well, maybe, I guess.
You're not sure?
I guess.
So is Bullock's Canine North associated with Bullock's Canine?
Yes.
So those two companies are associated?
Scandal, huh? Yeah, we work together.
I'm, I'm not asking you, it's a scandal.
We work together, yes.
Okay, and that is the, basically, the company that, or the individual that started up the American Working Dog Association that these dogs are then certified through?
Yeah, but they're certified through other people, not just, there's, there's more than just me and him and Jim, and there's people from all over the country that I do these things.
So my question would be, do the commissioners or does the sheriff have a concern that given that, that these same deputies have financial interests in these corporations?
I have a financial interest in American Working Dog Association.
You have American interest in Bullock's Canine, though, correct?
But it's not part of American Working Dog Association. I don't know how you tie two, it's an association.
They're registered to the same address, is how I'm tying them together.
It's, it's, it's not, I'm not making any money from American Working, if that's what you're assuming, you're wrong, so.
So if, if I can make this clear, number one, the contract that we have with, the contract that we're intending to get signed with Jim Brown to lease this dog, I believe there's a clause in there that says they cannot profit in any way from this dog, from this canine, or the association with the county. This, this dog cannot be used in any way for profit. If that clarifies that. As far as any associations that these, my deputies have with their private work, their private lives, I don't believe that that impacts what we do in the sheriff's office. Everything we do is above board. It's been that way since I took office. I don't see any conflict here. Multiple law enforcement agencies in this region get certified through American Working Dogs. The fact that these guys train with them, the fact that he just stated that he doesn't make any money off of this, I think should, should reassure the board that there's nothing underhanded going on here.
Any other questions? Any other audience participation?
I'd like, I'd like some more clarification on that. I don't understand this. Can you, can you go over that with me?
Me?
Ask, ask a specific question, please.
How are you related to the organization that certified the dog?
I'm a trainer in a certain organization.
So, when you're saying you don't pro, we won't profit. Are you saying the county won't profit, or he won't profit?
We, we don't make anything, either him individually or the county doesn't make anything from American Working Dogs Association.
Do you have to pay to get the dog certified?
Yes.
Okay. Who, who do you write the check to?
American Working Dog Association.
And you're affiliated by American Working Dogs?
Affiliated with the organizations.
He's a trainer. He does not profit through that company.
It's not, it's a nonprofit organization. I do not make anything. I'm just a trainer. That's it.
They don't pay you?
No. No.
So when you went to Canada in June of two thousand and eighteen with Mike Bullock to train dogs, you weren't paid at all to do that?
I didn't go to Canada.
The site list you was going, were you intended to go?
I was intended to go, but I didn't go. They canceled it. And if I go, I'm on time. Let's make.
Yeah, and again, let's make that clear. The fact that he might have an outside job, working for an organization that trains canines, doesn't affect his ability to work as canine deputy here in Beaver County, in Beaver County government. I don't see any conflict there whatsoever.
He previously trained a dog that he sold to an outside agency, and the agency returned that dog to him because it had concerns about the temperament. Is that correct?
Negative.
And then you then put that dog into service in the county?
Negative. If you're talking about someone returned a dog to me because they were concerned about the dog, no. You should talk to the officer.
So why did they return the dog to you then, sir?
It just wasn't for him.
So the handler didn't have the correct temperament for the dog?
Could be.
That was the dog that we could hear during police memorial services that wouldn't stop barking, that the other canine handlers were?
I never had my dog at a police memorial service.
Commissioners, I, I don't see, I don't see how this addresses the reason that we're here, and that is they're going to do a lease agreement, the resolution request that I put forward.
Any other questions? Will we need to reconvene after executive session?
I have a, um, issue for executive session, an employee issue.
We will not.
Will we need to reconvene for that one?
No, no.
Or we're going to go into executive session, not reconvene?